Stacy, you have one minute.
I have ten seconds.
Based on what I now know, comma.
Let the games begin. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the last city council meeting of 2022, Wednesday, December 28th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Allison, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you, Allison. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. A sale, item A, 3A, is sale property of historic canal entrance of Director Bailey on items two through five through your packet. Next on tonight's agenda is an agenda of public hearing for the sale of property located in Lebanon and identified as parcel 112 S02 West, 1100 tax lot 00300. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published on the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:01. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing to consider the sale of property that the City of Albany owns. It's located in the city of Lebanon. You can see a map with the location of the property on page five in your packet. The city acquired this lot as part of the purchase of the water system from Pacific Power in the 1980s. Historically, the entrance to the San Tiam Albany Canal was on this property. There was a small wood dam in the South San Tiam River that was destroyed in a flood in the 1920s. After that point, the Albany portion of the canal was connected to the Lebanon portion of the canal that created the configuration we have today. And this parcel was no longer used as part of the water system. However, when Pacific Power got the water system, they got this lot, and then they conveyed it to the city as part of the canal system. The City of Lebanon approached us regarding purchasing this parcel to use to extend River Park, which is adjacent to the south border of this lot, and use for park property and creating additional walking trails in the city. We had the parcel appraised, which came in at $70,000. Lebanon initially offered $60,000, and then you authorized us to counteroffer at 65, which Lebanon accepted. So, tonight, we're requesting that you authorize the city manager to enter into a sale of this property to the City of Lebanon for $65,000. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you. I will now call on anyone registered to speak on this topic? Thank you, Allison. Does anyone, does anyone that did not register wish to speak on the topic? Well, with that, I declare the public hearing closed at 6:01, 6:03. Council, discussion?
I move this, we approve the resolution in the city council authorizing the sale of real estate property identified as Lynn County Parcel 12 South, 02 West, 1100 Tax Lot, OO 300.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Do you have any question? We're good? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, item four is business from the public. So, there was no written public, written material submitted, and no one has signed up to speak virtually. After, does anybody in the audience wish to speak? No one signed up? Okay, thank you. There's any intending virtually? Nope, no one's signing virtually. So, with that, we'll move on to the next item. Number five, second reading of ordinances. First is A, item A, ordinance amending Albany Development Code DC-02-22, subsection one. Ann Catlin will be speaking on the topic. She has pages six through 33 in your packet. Sean?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, we had the first reading on this as a December 14th meeting, and so tonight, the second reading is automatic. And so, I'll go ahead and read it, and then we can, if there is any discussion after that, we can do that. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
I would move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Attorney. Sean? Item B, all ordinance amending Albany Development Code DC-002, subsection two. We have a second reading of ordinance. City Attorney, please.
Thank you. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Any councilor like to make a motion?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson, Counselor Smith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Ann Catlin, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The second ordinance was one that you were not interested in adopting last time. So, you can, procedurally now what to do, but maybe I should have said something, but I think.
I didn't realize that. I would not have voted in favor of that, had I known.
You're not voting in favor. You're voting to not adopt.
So, so this is the second reading, correct?
Right.
So, should we?
The motion was to adopt.
Motion was to adopt.
Because we forgot.
Yeah, we just forgot.
I, I.
Yeah.
Understand, understand. I'm trying to figure out. Allison, what should we do?
I'll withdraw my motion if needed.
So, she, she would withdraw her motion? Okay. So, Counselor Johnson?
I, I would move that we do not adopt the resolution.
You're withdrawing your motion first?
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
To adopt.
So, we would need it, we would not need a motion to adopt, we would just move on.
You can revote.
Is that right?
I think we have to vote, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You do have to revote.
So, we have a second reading of the ordinance. So, would counsel like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
No.
I would move to not adopt the ordinance.
I would second that.
So, we have a motion and a second not to adopt the motion. All those in favor are not adopting the motion?
Aye.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, ordinance. Aye. Those opposed? Is that correct?
None.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're not adopting the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So, next time? Let's not do this again. Thank you. So, next on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar, page, item six. Would counsel like to make a motion or make any changes?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
A motion and a second for adoption of consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, motion passes. Okay, where's the next item? So, next on the agenda is staff reports. Wait a minute, we're missing. Six, the, yep. Item seven is staff reports, Senate Bill 5561 funding request, Ann Catlin, page 59 through 74, your packet.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. You may remember, I think it's been a month or so, when I was here, you voted to award three agencies most of the $1 million, but there was a balance of $225,000. And at that time, we knew of a potential applicant, and you requested that they come provide a presentation. And they did provide an application, which went to the Community Development Commission, and the Community Development Commission recommends you fund an application from the Farm Worker Housing Development Corporation. And I have Carmen Fernandez is attending virtually to provide a presentation, which was provided in your packet. And we also have the director, Maria Guerra, is here in person to answer questions, but she came down in person for this. So, with that, if Carmen is available on the video, virtual video, then we can go ahead and have that presentation. There she is.
Yes, hi, everyone.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I want to take the opportunity really quickly to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors, for this opportunity to introduce ourselves to you. We are Farm Worker Housing Development Corporation. We were established in 1990 with the goal to provide housing and leadership for the farmworker community. In recent years, that goal has expanded to include workforce housing as well as farmworker housing. We continue to grow every year, and we currently have in our portfolio 10 properties located in seven different cities for a total of 480 units. Our most recent development is in the city of Lebanon. It consists of two phases. The first phase was for farmworker housing, and the second phase is 116 units for workforce housing. The second phase is due to be completed in March of 2023. We're very, very excited about this. We just opened our first building of the four and had tenants move in last week, right before Christmas. A little bit about FHDC. We offer support programs and services internally to our residents. We offer childcare education at our Cipriano Early Learning Education Center in Woodburn, as well as after-school programs throughout our different properties. And we team with either the local community college, such as Lynn Benton Community Colleges, to offer adult classes such as ESL and GED courses. We provide healthcare access. We work with a mobile healthcare that visits our different properties throughout the year, either one or two times, depending on the need of the property. We have recently, within the past few years, developed our own division in-house for workforce development training. We currently offer property management training courses as part of that workforce development. And we have an asset building division that, that centers on homeownership and microenterprise. That division works not only with our residents, but with the local community to establish asset building and understanding budgets, working with them to bring up, raise money for their down payments and items such as that. Now, we don't do this alone. You can see that right at the top. We have multiple partnerships without, throughout the communities with Boys and Girls Club, Mono a Mono, Girls Inc. We work with local housing authorities, Girl Scouts, other partners as well. With the new property in Lebanon, it's opened opportunities to partnerships within Lynn Benton Community College, Casa Latinos United. We're working with Lynn Benton Community Housing Authority, Community Service Consortium, and we're still looking for additional partners in the area. As you're aware, the property that we're in the process of purchasing is 8.6 acres, located at 4400 Spicer Road. The site, the maximum yield for this property was 213 units. So, this site is suitable for affordable housing. It does meet the goals for the city's growing needs for developing affordable housing. And this is our proposed Phase One concept. This is based on what we believe will be the funding availability for the project in this coming, this coming round with the NOFA's through OHCS. So, the intent of FHDC is to build out the entire eight-acre parcel. It will go in phases. The first phase, as outlined here, we are aiming for 70 units. Each of our communities has not only an outdoor play area for the children, but also offers community garden areas, walking paths, bike parking, wetland area that we're going to leave undisturbed and create more of a park-like atmosphere for the residents here. We will be doing improvements along Creole Road, and we will be tying into Goldfish Farm Road to the north. Phase one will only come to a partition at the northern part of the property, and then Phase two, we will continue down into the southern part of the property with the continued tie-in into Spicer Road to the south. So, this, this concept is a mix of two, three, and one-bedroom units, the majority being two and three-bedroom units, with one-bedroom units being added in. We have found in the course of the last few years that the target audience, or the target residents for our communities tend to be more Latino-based, and they have larger family, community, or large family bases. So, you may have multi, multi-generational families living together in one unit. This concept gives them an option to have, say, Grandma and Grandpa have their own unit, a one-bedroom unit that is nearby, that they can still provide childcare to their grandchildren while the parents are working, or it allows for close proximity. So, and we are finding that two and three-bedroom units are the most requested in the Lebanon area. And also, our research has shown that Albany is also looking for more two and three-bedroom family units as well. I think that was it. I know I'm, I'm probably out of time, but if you guys have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them. Darren Murphy is also on the call with us. He is working with us as a finance consultant, and he's helping me through this process.
Thank you, Carmen. Counsel, do we have any questions? What, Maria, would you please join us up here? So, I'm gonna ask Maria Guerra to come up and speak with us as well. So, Counselor Johnson was first. Well, yeah, please introduce yourselves when we start the discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson, and thank you, members of the council. My name is Maria Elena Guerra. Guerra is spelled G-U-E-R-R-A for the record. I'm the Executive Director for the Farm Worker Housing Development Corporation. Happy to be here.
So, counsel, thank you very much, Maria. Counsel, Counselor Johnson was first up.
Okay, so what, these are not gonna be sold, is that correct? They're gonna be rented?
That's correct. This is affordable rental housing.
How much, how much is the rent gonna be?
It depends on the level of income that we, we will have, but I think Darren has that information on hand. I don't have my book with me.
So, it's, so it's assisted living?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Subsidized.
Well, it's affordable rental housing.
Yeah.
So, the rents are lower than in the market rate.
Yeah, sure. I want to say that I think this is discrimination to just have it for one group of people, and I'm, I'm not for this at all.
I don't think it's for one group of people.
I want to clarify, and I think my peer Carmen make a mistake when they say it's for Latinos. I want to be very clear with, we don't discriminate. This housing opportunity is for anyone that needs housing.
Yeah, that definitely wasn't what was said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I totally agree with you, and I saw that in, in her presentation, and I want to make sure that fair housing doesn't allow us to do that, Commissioner Johnson. You're correct. We will open opportunities to everyone that is a low-income family or individual that qualifies to live in there.
So, who provides the assisted funding of the housing?
Oregon Housing and Community Service opened their applications in general, in January, February of next year. We apply for the funding, and there is different funding that we have to apply. It's not just one, but the major one is coming at the beginning of 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, I noticed on page 74 of our packet, it has your application, and it has in bright red on the budget template, complete below and/or attached project financials, and specify how city funds would be used. But I don't see anything on this indicating how the city funding portion would be used. But I do see, in very, very, very large type, face other costs at $100,000, but it doesn't say who, what, where, when, why. So, I'm just questioning, where is the city money actually going to go?
Darren, could you go with that?
Sure. I'm happy to address that question. And Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me here tonight. The funding is intended to be used for the construction activities on the project, and I think you're right in that the, it may not have been as clear on the application as we could. I think we were responding to the budget categories that were in the standard form there. But generally, the, those funds from the City of Albany would be used towards construction activities.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is other for the 225. That makes sense. So, we might want to update our forms. Any other council have questions? Go ahead, Counselor Olson.
Yeah, on your first page of this presentation, the bottom line said that you offer homeownership.
That's correct.
Is that available here in, in this project?
It is in the future development of the property. We are looking into acquiring 8.6 acres. We hope that we will have the opportunity to work in homeownership in that property, yes.
Okay.
So, it's a mixed, so it's a mixed strategy.
I think that's a, a major plus for people to be able to buy where they live. And I think our society is going way too far in insisting on rental residential stuff. I hope you can make that work.
Thank you. Our goal is for the families to start.
Do any of the other projects you showed, do they have homeowners in those projects?
In other projects?
Well, you showed several other projects you have here in the state.
Yeah, no, we don't have.
Homeownership in any of those?
We don't have that, no. This will be the first site that we will be doing affordable homeownership.
Okay. I'm disappointed in that.
To add on to that, I apologize for breaking in, but we recently added a asset building division internally that is working, again, with not only our residents, but the community to get them in a financial position to be able to afford homeownership. And we'll be building on that aspect of our internal division to possibly add homeownership onto this project in a future phase.
Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
So, I was gonna ask for some clarification, but I think I have it now, and I just wanted to verify. These initial 70 units that we're looking at, they are all of them rentals. But what I'm hearing you say is that in the future, you're looking to expand into opportunities for actual homeownership.
Correct.
Because I'm on that page, too. I think that would be wonderful as opposed to everybody renting. So, I appreciate the start, and I really wish you well with, with getting into homeownership.
Thank you.
For folks. Thank you.
Any other counselor?
I have another question. So, apparently, you don't have all the funding yet to continue with the project, is that correct? Or do you?
We need to, the application is coming up in 2023.
Okay, so, you do not have the funding yet. So, if you don't get the funding, then I would question what happens to the city funds?
Well, city's funds wouldn't go anywhere till she has, I imagine, Counselor, City Attorney. So, we award this. There's a timeline, correct, Ann? Please, join us.
I see, yeah, okay.
Our usual practice is to award funds after expenditures have been incurred, and so they would not move forward, I mean, if they didn't get their funding secure. But I think they're fairly confident in, in the funding sources and their success rate. But yeah, we would not be giving them money that then would disappear if they didn't, the project wouldn't move forward. They wouldn't get money upfront. Same with the other applicants that came before you. They would spend their funds, and then they get reimbursed, so.
So, where does the money come from? Some kind of grant, or?
Yeah, this was a million dollars allocated by the legislature at their special legislative session about a year ago.
For housing.
We got a million dollars, and it's intended to address housing affordability and homelessness issues in our communities.
So, so nothing will be allocated or released until they spend money on the project of their own? Okay, counsel, do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the.
Well, he has a question.
Were other developers made aware that that kind of money might be available for a similar project?
Yeah, we did do a request for applications back initially, and then we had the first round of applications come before you. And then, this was a project that didn't apply in that round, but they weren't as far along with their project. So, we asked you if you would like to get an application from them, and we did get the application. And yes, but we did, we did go through a public process to identify applicant, applicants.
So, local people would have to keep track of what the council is doing?
Correct, yes, we did. I, I'm not just nonprofit agencies in the area, but I did actually reach out to some of our local builders, and we didn't receive any applications.
So, was this group recruited, or were they just on the ball enough that they knew about it?
Are you talking about the fair housing, a Farm Worker Housing Development Corporation?
Yes.
Yeah, so, they, they weren't far enough along in this property purchase to have applied initially, and there was a balance of funds left. And so, I asked if you'd like me to reach out to them, and so I did, because that was the direction I got from, from you.
Yep. Counsel, anybody would like to make a motion?
I move, we approve the grant of the application as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes five to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, item seven, Bravo, is reclassification of senior administrative supervisor positions, and police and fire. Director Rotten will be speaking with us this evening. Pages, there's no, page 75 of your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm with, I'm here with a fairly straightforward request this evening. The fire chief is not, is not able to join us.
I'm having a hard time hearing you get closer.
How's that? Sorry about that. I'm here this evening with a fairly routine request. Oh, and Chief Wooton is now online, if you have questions for him. I'm bringing this forward typically the department head would come to you with this request, but since it impacts both police and fire, I went ahead and put my name to it. So we recently completed a comprehensive job analysis and associated salary survey for the senior admin supervisor positions in the police and fire departments. And upon analysis, we determined that the positions are more appropriately classified as a business manager. There's a similar position in the Public Works Department. And historically, police and fire have not had such a position, but the positions have evolved over the last several years and have been tasked with this work. The request this evening is for the council to approve by motion the reclassification of two full-time senior administrative supervisor positions in the police and fire departments to a 1.0 FTE police business manager and a 1.0 FTE fire business manager effective January 1. The budget impact for this request is approximately $3,680 per position, per year. And there are adequate funds within the respective department budgets to support that change. Do you have any questions for me or for the chiefs?
Any questions for Director Roten, or the fire chief, or the police chief?
Just a comment. This is really sensible. It, it's a change that, it's, it looks like in word only, but it acknowledges very different duties from what those folks were hired to do a long time ago.
Yes, certainly. And that was very evident when we did the job analysis, counselor. The positions have evolved quite dramatically.
So is there will be, so the title will be business manager, or they'll be bringing that back to us later?
But this includes a title change. It's a reclassification. So they have a new, a new job description that reflects their current duties now with this title change, and there's a salary change associated with that. It's all part of the request.
As well, question, is it a title like business manager for the fire department, or?
Yes, it's a fire business manager and a police business manager.
That's all I need to know, that's all I was looking for, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions for Director Roten, or the fire chief, or police chief? I'm asking for a motion.
I would move to approve the reclassification of the two positions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Have a wonderful New Year. Next on the agenda is business from the council. I will start with Counsel Olson first, and I'll move over to Counsel Smith.
Did you say me?
Yes.
I have nothing, but I, I see one of my constituents came in late. And I'm wondering if he was wanting to talk business from the public. And seeing as how my last, it's my last meeting, I'd like to hear from my constituent.
I'll grant the request. Oh, that's Director Roten's, I bet.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. My name's Tom Cordier, I live out of North Albany. We had a power outage recently that was expansive, and our power came back very quickly, really. The under promise and over delivery principle worked. PPNL did an excellent job of communicating about what the, what the situation was and when we might expect and power to be back. And then they communicated through cell phones and all that kind of stuff. And even came back and asked the question. They, they basically said, we, we think your power is on. Would you, would you confirm that you got your power on, or is your power still off? Okay, and that's really customer service. Now, I contrast that with what happened last Thursday night when we had the icy freeze. And I very carefully took my refuse cans from Republic, Republic, and put them out at the sidewalk at 11 o'clock at night. We had a bunch of people come in that night, and they all got home safely. And, but I took the time to take them out. And lo and behold, there was no Republic, Republic service that morning, which is our Friday morning, which is our normal time. Received no communication at all. And so Friday comes and goes, and Saturday comes and goes, and Sunday comes and goes, and Monday comes and goes. And so I went down to Republic on Tuesday morning and said, what's the plan, Stan? And they said, we don't know. Let me go get, because I went down to their building and talked to the, to the person at the desk. And she said, I don't know. And so she went and got coached by somebody and said, well, you, you, you'll get your normal service next Friday. And I said, how come, I mean, you guys have communicated with me before on my cellphone, or even on my home phone, they'll leave messages. How come now we've had four or five days, there's no, no communication on what the plan is? And she said, well, we found out about the freeze after five on Thursday. And I don't work on Fridays, nor Saturday, nor Sunday, nor Monday. So we had nobody here to do any communication. And I think that stinks. Your contracted supplier of services failed to communicate with its customers.
So that was the first time I've heard that, Tom. That's good feedback for us, though.
Okay, so anyway, I, I, I would hope that you guys would.
I've got a note right here to talk.
Give some counsel to that, that company for their failure to communicate with their customers.
I appreciate that, because I know, I got the calls from power company and everything. And so, yeah, I didn't realize you had that problem up in North Albany, so I apologize for that. I will talk to municipal manager about it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, I just, just want to say a comment that.
Go ahead, please.
I, somewhere I read, or I got a call on it saying they didn't know when they were going to pick it up, to leave it out until they could get their trucks out. Now, I can't remember where I got it from, but, you know, maybe it wasn't in North Albany, I don't know. But we did get some word that they would come later. Ours is on Thursday morning. And so, but I just wanted to comment that, I mean, I've always challenged Republic Services for a long time, but this time, at least we got the message, but I'm sorry that you didn't.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, Counsel Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, but I did get a call, maybe it was Tom's complaint that triggered it. And the call said that they'd probably be fixing, picking it up, I think they said Friday, so.
So you guys on the same clock, same schedule? Because we're down on Ward Two, we're down by OBCC.
I know North Albany is Friday.
It's Friday, Ward Two is Tuesday.
And if Friday was a sheet of ice, I can see where nobody would think about taking care of trash. But Tom makes a really good point that there was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You know, it's been a lot of warm, no ice weather, so.
Well, the communication still should have been there, whether it be email.
To me, they're, they're under contract with the city, serve the customers.
So when you have a late payment, they're on you every five minutes, right?
And I, I, at least I deserve some communication.
Yeah, if you, if you're late, though, they're texting your phone, they're blowing your phone every five minutes, so. Yeah, you're right, Tom, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thanks, Nick.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
I'm going back and forth. Yes, I wasn't sure if Counselor Olson was finished. Not much to say, except that today I got to take advantage of the end of COVID restrictions and finally host two of my fellow members of the League of Oregon Cities Women's Caucus on a tour of downtown Albany. We spent four hours downtown today at Margin and Emma and the gallery, and we rode the carousel. And they, and we had goodies at Natural Sprinkles. And they, I left them to take care of some council business while they worked their way through the Albany Antique Mall. And they, I showed them various Cara projects downtown. They took lots of pictures. We talked about how our councils do business. It was a wonderful day, and they'll be back. But anyway, I, we hadn't had a chance to meet. We've been, had been doing caucus Zoom calls for a year and a half before we finally met at the League of Oregon Cities Women's Conference in Bend in October. And we had planned this Albany Day for a very long time. So with the rain held off, they, they were impressed. Not only, oh, I forgot, we also spent quite a bit of time in City Hall. And they, they like our artwork, they like the layout of the building. They were impressed with our website, with informational materials that are posted upstairs outside Public Works and planning. And anyway, they, we made a very good impression on two very bright women. So thanks for letting me show off.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
I really appreciate this time. I want to thank, I, I, I'm really excited when I get to learn about things that the city is doing that are really awesome, and I want to highlight them a few times in a public setting. One of those things is the Public Works employees who are saving us $3,000 to $4,000 a month in their efforts, who have conserved energy at the water treatment plant. And so we're saving a bunch of money there. Shout out to Scott LaRocque and Mike Byron, among others. And of course, you know, our wonderful Chris Bailey. And then also thank you to the folks who protect our water and storm water systems and deter pollutants from getting into our rivers and streams. I know from my own experience, I'm working on a development that will protect the storm waters. I'm also excited about the streetlights becoming more economical and saving the community hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So the, the city is doing these wonderful things to save us money, and I just wanted the, the city to know that. I also wanted to know that while riding the bus today, I spent the day, unlike Marilyn, riding the public buses of Albany, and it was a great experience, along with our, my future replacement, Jackie Montague. And we did some surveys for Ann Catlin regarding our housing situation here in Albany, various questions regarding housing discrimination, homeless services, housing and other services in the city. And it was a great experience. And as I was noticing the, the customers that are on the bus, most of them, the vast majority of them are very low-income and have expressed, every time I asked the questions, they would express how grateful they were for the fact that the bus was free. So just to let you know, the people who are using the bus really need it. And I, I'm excited, and they are excited, about the expansion of services for the bus. So taking that into consideration. And then continuing on, I want to thank all the, the APD, awesome police department that we have here. They are doing the second year of our coat for coat collection and donations. And that is just wonderful. They are continuing their support for that. And then finally, oh, not finally, one more thing. I really appreciate being here in the, on the city council. And after our last meeting, we had a hearing. And I got the email from Darla, and her arguments were much more substantial. And I think, you know, there's something we can do to look into that about how we're administering that rule.
Bartholomew, I think we need to address the city council.
Oh.
That's okay, I wasn't gonna, we were gonna get into too much detail there. No, so that, that matter has been actually appealed now to the Landys Board of Appeals. So it is considered now current litigation.
Okay.
So when we'll talk about that, we'll go into executive session. If we want to have a discussion about it, we'll do that, so. That happened today, so it's breaking news.
Thank you, thank you. And now, and then the last thing I'd like to do is thank the city staff, all of them there. Pretty awesome, and I've really enjoyed getting to know them better and working with them and all that they do here at the city. And Manager Troodsen, he's a pretty sweet guy, just got to say. And then all of you, council, I have to say, you're really enjoyable, all of you. And I really respect the, those folks that are my compatriots who are leaving the council. I really appreciate their contributions. And I hope that they, the new, the council enjoys the new members as much as they respected the three of us. So thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Counsel Bartholomew. Counselor Kupczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Movak, please.
Thank you. I would like to say, and hopefully, and not crossing any lines or anything, but I'm, I was impressed by the letter we received. And I'm hoping we will be able to address that in the future. I, I think there's room for change, so. And that's all I'll say about that right now. I also want to acknowledge my departing colleagues here on the council. It has been a pleasure and an honor serving with you all. And two of you at least were here way before Stacy and I came on and Marilyn. So I, I just respect you, and I thank you for your service. And I sort of miss you already, but I also know that this is the way it works and other people come on. And I just know that I, I might say hello in the future and pick your brains over things because you have such a wealth of experience. And I, I do recognize and respect that and honor that. And that's where I will stop this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson?
You left me for last. Thank you. And yes, I say, if, if you have any questions or want to vent or something, you know, now we can talk. You know, email me, you know, whatever and stuff. But I just want to say that it's been just an honor and a pleasure to serve this city for 20 years. Have everything gone my way? No, you know, it's, and that's the way it should be. You just have to work at compromise and what's best for the city and keep your agendas out of it. And that's just a piece of advice. And that's just a piece of advice. I want to say, I know the staff knows how I feel about them. I don't really have to say anything. They know. And I, it, it's bittersweet to, to say it. And you know, I, I just really have enjoyed working with all of you and the ones prior. And Peter and Sean and Wes and, oh gosh. Who's the other one? Oh, Delapour. How could I forgive Delapour? As I said in my, in my, in my note to the fire and police when I delivered my popcorn this year, the 20th year, I said, yeah, I says, just, you know, Delapour always said his job was to keep us out of jail. And that's exactly what he did with a sense of humor. But I just want to say that I have enjoyed it. And I do know that when you get a letter from the SCI where we file our ethics reports every year, that when they say you've been reporting for many years, we notice that you are not a member of this Albany council anymore, so you don't have to report anymore. And don't, don't reply to this letter because there's no one there. And I'm thinking, that's a dismissal, you know? It's come to reality, but I just want to thank everybody. It's been, it's been a pleasure and I'll keep in touch, I'll stay involved. And I say, you know, like to, councillor like Montague and anyone else, there's going to be times when you're going to need to vent. Now, you, you know, I'm not a councillor anymore, so you can vent, email me anytime and say, can you imagine what they did? Because every one of us have either talked to someone or our spouses who actually don't, aren't asleep when we get home. They just pretend because they don't want to, don't want to say, well, how was your night, dear? They don't care anymore because you tell them.
Have you been talking to my wife?
It's just, it's just been a pleasure. And on that note, I will say thank you all.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Thank you.
So to my departing councillors, I, and counterparts, I want to thank you. Being an elected official in any capacity brings great stress. But the servant leadership you've shown over the years you've served, even yours is brief, is admirable. And I know it takes tireless dedication to do a job well done, read the packets, to deal with feedback, to deal with each other, to serve on this dais and take the criticism and the accolades that do come our way. But I will tell you this much, I have been honored and it's been an absolute honor for me to serve with all of you. I was elected four years ago and Nick has been a great counsel. Stacy Bartholomew opened my eyes to a whole realm of tiny housing I did not know existed. And councillor Johnson, you've been a great resource, a great friend, a great contact, great mentor. And I will forever be indebted to all of you for your services to the city of Albany. So thank you all. And I'm sure the staff will say something to you as we depart this meeting tonight, but you're always welcome. And I'll be inviting you to help me with certain things. And I've already reached out to you. And Jackie's reached out to you and I'll be banging on your door too. But it has been an absolute honor and I hope that you all have a wonderful new year. And don't be strangers. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things by way of business here. Sheriff Van Arsdale was sworn in today as the Benton County Sheriff. And next Tuesday, Sheriff Michelle Duncan will be sworn in over at the courthouse at 8:15 in case anyone is interested in attending. I wanted to just mention to you that I still have the voicemail from Republic Services on my phone. If anybody is interested in hearing that I live in North Albany as well. And then finally, thank you, all of you for your kind words. I hope though that you will still come on January 4th and let us formally recognize you and acknowledge your service to the city council, to the city. And that, in that evening, we will swear in new councillors as well. And the last thing is that the meeting on January 9th is canceled. That's a Monday work session. There was not enough business to warrant having a, having a meeting. So we moved the one item to Wednesday. And so you can erase that one from your calendar. And with that, I also wish all of you a happy new year. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, city manager. Peter Allison, there was reconvene on here, was that a mistake?
That's, yeah, a leftover from some other time.
Okay, just checking. Okay, thank you. I'm crossing it off now. So ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is going to be January 4th, Wednesday at 6:00 PM. It's a special session. We'll be swearing in the newly elected officials, myself included. And I want to thank the city of Albany for electing me again as their mayor to serve in that role and to be a part of the future of the city of Albany. And with that, I will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you.